This is presented to George V. Frazee, who on December 3, 2020, retired from employment with the city of Alamo after 25 or 58 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alamo, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. George, congratulations. Next is Jerry Heifer. You want to come on with him?
I can't in the back.
No, it's okay, I'm sorry. Hey, you're just...
Jerry started with us in 1986 and retired as a heavy equipment operator. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Jerry L. Heifer, who on January 1, 2021, retired from employment with the city of Alamo after 31 or 42 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alamo, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Clear? Next is Billy Flaylon. Billy joined the city in 1990 and retired as the street maintenance crew leader. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Billy G. Flaylon, who on February 1, 2020, retired from employment with the city of Alamo after 30 or 24 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alamo, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Thank you, Al. We're in audio. That's a lot of experience. We're living here at one time.
Yes, it is.
Council, next is approval of amendments. Consider approval of the February 1, 2021 regular enclosed meeting amendments. There is a correction at your desk tonight.
Move approval with necessary corrections.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend. Second by Councilmember Hobb. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, I have a few agenda adjustments. Number one, we want to move the stormwater presentation up to come right after number six. Second, we want to add the Martin and Starr's Associates contract that is at your desk tonight, right at the end of the consent agenda.
As part of the consent agenda?
Correct. And number 14, we want to move up to come right after number seven.
Move approval.
Question by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hobb. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Move to number six then. Clinton Swearings, a Stanley County tax collector, to provide an update on the current property tax reevaluation process.
Well, good evening, mayor and council. I'm happy to be with you tonight. I'm going to turn this a little bit so my backs not to miss you during this whole presentation. My name is Clinton Swearings and I'm a tax administrator for Stanley County. I've been working here for 19 years. I brought Charles Johnson with me. He's our real property supervisor. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about revaluation. Revaluation is something that takes place every, at least every eight years in Stanley County, but we're on a four-year cycle. And that four-year cycle is happening now, January 1 of 2021. So the main reason I'm here is I want to inform not only you, but maybe the citizens of Alamo also. Why do we have a revaluation? What is even the purpose of it? The main purpose is it's required by law. The second purpose is we want to maintain an equitable tax base throughout the entire county at all times. And that can only happen every four years or every eight years if you're on that cycle. A lot happens over every four years. Properties go up in value. Some properties decrease in value. Things change. Nothing stays the same. The last revaluation we did was in 2017. And so this one, like I said, takes effect on January 1, 2021. My office sets all the property tax values to reflect the fair market values for all of the properties in Stanley County. And we do that by gathering a lot of data. That data includes sales from multiple listing services, excise stamps on the deeds for the properties that have sold, and letters referencing to the new owners what they actually paid for the property. For almost all properties, the revaluation will create a change of some kind, but not all property values will change at the same percentage. I can't stand here tonight and tell you that baiting is going to increase at the same level as locusts because there's none. It's different areas of the county. Different increases are going to happen there. We do look at increases and decreases by neighborhood and what is happening in that specific neighborhood and what's going on with the market forces around it. Areas of the county experiencing high growth like locusts could see values increase more than areas of slower growth. And although the value of your property does affect your share of taxes paid, it's only half of the equation. When my office mails these notices out, we're going to be bombarded by phone calls. And the number one thing they usually ask me is not anything about their value. It's what's my tax bill going to be? And I have to tell them I have no idea because I'm setting these values in March. Alamo City Council, Stanley County Commissioners, all the other city councils across the county aren't going to set theirs till probably sometime in June when you adopt your budget. So I have no idea what their tax bill is going to be. The best way I tell people to remember is your property tax value times the tax rate is going to give you your tax bill. Now, that property tax rate is going to be determined by the budgetary needs of the city of Alamo and what you want to accomplish. Towns, cities, fire districts, everybody's making their own decisions about how much revenue they need to provide the services that they want to provide. Property taxes are the primary source of revenue for all local governments in North Carolina. I can't speak to the actual percentage of property tax revenue for the city of Alamo, but the Stanley County makes up 50% of our revenue. So if the property tax disappeared, you could cut all of the Stanley County services in half. Sheriff, EMS, what they would get to the schools, community college, all of that would be cut in half. So property taxes are very, very important because cities and counties, we don't collect income taxes and we don't have any jurisdiction over sales tax that's done by the General Assembly. So property taxes are important. Now, at this time, I want to turn it over to Mr. Johnson and let him talk a little bit about the timeframe for the revaluation and how he came about it and the actual appeal process.
Good evening, Charles Johnson. Thanks for having us this evening. We're currently in the process of picking up new construction for the 2021 year. A portion of us are. The other portion, we are working on finalizing the 2021 revaluation values. We hope to have these notices out probably by the middle to the end of March. Traditionally, we'd like to have these out in February, but because of the pandemic, we're behind unfortunately. We've had some time, a lot of, you know, we had some people coming down with COVID virus. So right now, we're shooting for notices to go out by the middle of March, latest end of March. Now, we're looking at sending these out. And when we send out a letter, they will give you an appeal process. And also, there will be a toll, not a toll free, but a dedicated phone line for folks who want to have questions about their new values but don't necessarily want to appeal those values. We have, to give you kind of a gauge what we're doing, we have looked at approximately 40,000 parcels in the county. We have photographed the vast majority of the approved parcels and we have those on file. So when you come in to make an appeal or in this case, because of the pandemic, we may be switching over to a written appeal process, which will be different than prior years. So we will have, we will be able to look and see what your property looks like. We'll be able to make hopefully a valid judgment as far as your concerns. Now, let me say this. The property owner knows their parcel more than we will ever know it. They know the details, but we don't get inside the home. And if you feel like we've made a mistake, and I'm sure we have, it is upon the taxpayer to help us help them. If they can bring us photographs, sales data, appraisals, cost estimates for repairs, if they can bring any of this information to us, photographs of the inside, this will help us greatly in order to help them with their concerns about their property values. But we need their help. Frequently, frequently, you know, folks come in and say my value is too high. And they do, but we have to have more than just that to be able to make a change. If they can provide us something, they will make the process much easier. We have state certified appraisers on staff who will be hearing these appeals. And this will be in the initial informal appeal process. You'll have 30 days after the date of the notice we will mail you to appeal. And after that, you'll get another notice with your results of your informal appeal. If at that time, you're still not happy with the results of your informal appeal, then you can make a formal appeal to the Board of Equalization Review. It's a five-member panel appointed by the county commissioners who sit for them to hear appeals. And that will be at the county commissioners' meeting room, 1001 First Street. We do not know when they're meeting yet because that is contingent upon when these initial notices are going out, but that will be posted in the Stanley News &amp; Press. And there will be, like I say, on your appeal results notice, we will also give you a timeframe for their 30 days. And like I said, most people will call up and they will have just basic questions and we will have a dedicated phone line for that. If a taxpayer feels like, after having an informal appeal with our staff in our offices, having our formal appeal with Board of Equalization Review, if they still do not feel like their property is assessed at market value, then their next avenue of appeal would be to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. Now, normally, we get about 12 to 20 appeals of reappraisal. And of those, I bet we normally see about three or four actually make it to Raleigh. Because quite honestly, we don't want to go to Raleigh. You don't want to go to Raleigh. It's an expensive time-consuming appeal process. And quite honestly, we try to be as reasonable as we can and we would like to see if we can come to some sort of agreement on the value. So that's kind of the process. Once, once the Board of Equalization Review, if I jump back a little bit, once they adjourn, you can't make any more appeals at that point. So you can make an informal appeal. You can go, you can skip the informal appeal and go straight to Board of Equalization Review. But once they adjourn, your appeal process window, your appeal window will close for the 2021 year. You don't have to wait until next year. So, and I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Council, have any questions for Clinton or for Charles?
I do. Thank you both. Thank you so much for coming. And two questions. This is a Colombo question, okay? We have to do it every eight years or it has to be done by the Board of County Commissioners every eight years. And the county has opted to do it every four, right? Prior to 17, was it a four or a five or was that one of those?
It's been, it's been a four-year rebound cycle ever since 2001.
So for the past 16 or 20 years now, okay. And the photos, Charles, that you made a comment of, were those photos been, have they been taken? Are they aerial, are they aerial photos?
Straight view.
Straight view photos. And were they taken in the last six months? Or have they been taken in the last 18 months?
They were made over the last 24 months.
Okay.
It's about, we have three full-time appraisers on staff. It's just impossible to visit all 40,000 parcels and without a two-year timeframe.
And the reason I ask that is a Colombo question. It's not so much for us, but it's for the people that are watching this right now on Facebook and the people that will watch it on YouTube coming up, that what they see on a photo may have been two years ago. It may not be.
Yeah, they won't actually be able to see the photos unless they come to the office.
Unless it's in the appeal process. Right, 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 right. And you are setting this by the end, sending out the approvals by the end of March.
That's the plan. Hopefully, everybody stays healthy. That's the plan.
So we're about a month behind right now. Isn't that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, okay.
Yeah, back in March and April of last year, we closed the entire office down for a month.
Oh, yeah.
And that just put everybody behind in everything that they were doing. I spoke to my counterparts across all other 99 counties and the counties that's having revivals dealing with the same problems we are.
Got you.
It's behind.
Thank you.
Did you see an overall decrease in the overall county collection rate?
I can't speak to the city's rate, but last year, closing out June 30 of 2020, the county was at 97.49 and we went down to 97.32.
Okay.
So we did see some decrease, but my office didn't, we didn't push as hard as we have in some years even, trying to give people the benefit of the doubt.
And you may have said it, but what's the overall timeframe for the appeal process?
Once we mail the notices out, we give everybody 30 days. In the past, we've always had them come in and meet with us one-on-one, but that's not going to be a realistic goal this time. Now, we can still, if you just show up up there, we're going to talk to you through the glass and we're going to help you the best we can. But anybody that wants to appeal, we're not 100% in stone yet because we're waiting to see with this vaccine, is it going to help any? But as time's drawing closer, we're just likely going to have to do mail-in appeals. And at that point, you know, once they mailed it in, we would look at it. They put their phone number on there. There's a slot for it. We had questions, we would call them. The biggest thing is if you mail in an appeal, don't put it too high because that's not a valid argument. We hear it all the time, but that's not a valid argument. If you can show me in your neighborhood and there's been four houses that have sold for less than tax value, let's talk. But be perfectly honest, the real estate market or residential homes is the strongest it's been in my entire career.
Even now?
I dare to say anybody who sells their house for the tax value we have on it right now.
That's right.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Mail them out at the end of March and then they have 30 days until April.
They'll have 30 days, but it's really longer than that because Charlie alluded to, they don't have to have an informal appeal with us. They can go straight to the Board of VNR. And so, once the Board of VNR has their first meeting, then my office can't make any changes anymore. Because at that point, they don't have time to appeal and then wait 30 more days and go to the Board of VNR. So once the Board of VNR starts, if you haven't talked to us already and haven't got a decision in the mail, then you'll have to go straight to the board. And when the chairman of the Board of VNR slams that gavel, whether that's May the 30th or June the 6th, whatever that date is, there will be no more real property appeals for 2021.
So I guess my point of my question was if, at that timeframe, is that going to impact county or city council in the budgetary process?
It shouldn't because I've already had a conversation with Michael. I'll be able to give a safe number, what I think, compared to past year's appeals and what's happened. And usually, within that first 30 days, I always give my base estimates to Mr. Ferris. It's the third week in April every year. And so by that third week in April, I should have a good idea of who's appealing. And it's not your average taxpayer with his residential house affecting the base that much. It's all the big companies or anybody else, you know, that may be appealing. Or you've got massive amounts of value on some of them.
Further question? Clinton, Charles, thank you very much.
Yeah, I like talking with your staff. Every time I talk with Mr. Ferris, he's always good to work with. Colin Conroy, Richard Lanzalotti, all of those do a good job of interacting with me and I'm thankful for that. And I hope my staff works well with them also. Thank you for your time. Y'all have a good night and stay safe.
Thank you. Next is presentation for the selection of an engineering firm for the stormwater management plan.
Good evening, council, mayor. Glad to be here tonight and I'm excited to share some information with you all. Something that we've spent a lot of hours on studying and researching. And hopefully, after tonight, we can take Alamo in the next phase of our stormwater management and to help improve the quality of life of our residents, to help protect our property and our people from flooding issues. What we're going to do tonight is do a little PowerPoint presentation to kind of regroup on where we are now. So what we know, back on June 15, we came before council and we did a stormwater presentation based on a lot of issues and concerns that were being raised at the time because of a lot of flooding, a lot of flooding. And that's not supposed to happen.
Revenue is...
Big eye in the sky is watching us.
Guys, we might should tell Lee Snuggs and that bunch that we're doing this because...
Can you stand your underpunch?
I know he is, but we've got all these folks that came in from that...
You're next up after us.
They're next on the agenda.
They're next, right, I know. I just want to make sure.
They were waiting in the back. We've been managing...
Okay, okay, sorry. I just, when I saw all of them come in, I was like, okay.
So again, what we know, back on June 15, when we presented to council some of the issues that we were facing, we had a representative from the UNC School of Government come at that time, talked a little bit about how we can move forward with stormwater management. Again, at that time, we were getting hit pretty hard with some flooding issues where we were at our wits' end on how to handle them and mitigate them. Just to refresh your memory, you know, these are some of the properties that were affected back at that time. Here's Hinson Street, which is back behind Sonic. Our public housing property and off of Inver Street was an area that was impacted pretty severely. Mascot Drive, again, thoroughfare that comes through, some private properties there. East Cannon and East Oakwood, obviously, that was one that was out in the public and presence of the public eye and on social media. And so during that meeting on June 15, city council authorized city staff to move forward and work on a multi-year phased approach to address stormwater issues that could eventually result in adopting a stormwater management plan and to move the city of Alamo forward. So how we got here today? After that meeting, city staff, we all came together and we put together a stormwater project team. And that team that you see, most of them are here behind me tonight or with me tonight. Nikki Hardy, the Assistant City Manager, myself representing Public Works, Lisa Kaiser with Parks and Recreation, Kevin behind me with Planning and Development Services, Brian Hinson wasn't able to be here tonight, but he was active with our group as well. He represented the Public Utilities Department. And of course, we had Britt Birch, our city attorney, involved in this. So our main goals with the, with the project team was one to, was to establish an RFQ, a request for qualifications. We got that together. We advertised to qualifying firms. We allowed those RFQs to come in. Our staff went through a rigorous vetting process to go through the RFQs and then we were going to select our finalists. So with that, we had eight engineering firms that responded to the RFQ. Our stormwater management team, we vetted all the RFQs and we narrowed down the three finalists. And out of those three finalists, we did interviews with each firm. We contacted and did background research with references on what they provided us within their RFQs. And with all that, after going through the criteria and the vetting process, we selected WK Dixon. And so a little bit about WK Dixon, I won't steal their thunder. We do have their reps here tonight or one of their reps here tonight. WK Dixon is a community infrastructure consulting firm specializing in the sustainable growth of municipalities since 1929. So they've been around a while. They have 11 offices spread out between North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee and Georgia. And they do have some local offices here in Charlotte and also in Hickory and Raleigh. Besides obviously stormwater management and planning specialties, their other specialties include stream restoration, environmental permitting, mitigation design, green infrastructure and watershed planning. One of the things that called our eye, the project team about WK Dixon, is their involvement in North Carolina municipalities and counties. And some of the work that they've done here in Alamo, I mean, some of the work they've done here in North Carolina that was comparable to what we're looking for in Alamo. You can see Durham County, they've worked with them. Greenville, North Carolina is one of their clients that they've done a lot of work. Hope Mills and obviously Cary, North Carolina. Those are just to name a few. So where do we go from here? That's, that's where we are now. So at the Fall Strategic Planning Session back in November, if you all remember, city council endorsed stormwater management as one of their top priorities. Fast forward to today, after doing our recent community survey, results showed that our residents here in the city and around, one of their priorities are for the city to be more proactive more proactive in addressing the flooding issues and implementing a proactive approach to stormwater management. So those two align. And also, with Almaral seeing the growth of residential subdivisions currently being built and even more in the planning phase right now, stormwater runoff is going to be even more impactful in the future for the city. Obviously, with, and we'll talk a little bit more about this as discussion moves on, but with the MS4 designation with the state, eventually, the city of Almaral will be designated in MS4. We follow the criteria. It's not a matter of with, what, when? It's a matter of if. But it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So we can talk about that a little bit more. And so moving forward, in consultation with City Manager, Mr. Ferris, we've talked and we have identified monies to fund this proposed project with WK Dixon. And through available funds in this current fiscal year, along with the drawdown from the city's fund balance reserves, this will allow staff to enter an agreement with WK Dixon and begin the multi-phased approach of addressing the many stormwater issues that we have around the county, around the city. And with that being said, I'll introduce Tom Murray. He's the Raleigh Stormwater Program Manager with WK Dixon. And also Keith Redling. Keith Redling is with Raptellus. He is the financial consultant that partners with WK Dixon that'll help do rate studies with this program. And I'd like to ask, after their presentation, just hold your questions until afterwards, and then hopefully, we can answer any questions Council may have. Great. Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you, Ross, and thank you, Council, for having us here tonight. We're excited to talk to you about kind of the future of stormwater program management within the city. Ross gave us a great introduction, but we are a local regional firm, started in Charlotte in 1929, and served the Southeast really for community infrastructure improvements. And that could be on the stormwater side, water sewer. We have an aviation practice as well, but really, our firm focuses on community infrastructure. Within our stormwater practice itself, we have approximately 30 individuals throughout the company that work on these types of projects for communities across the Southeast. As Ross mentioned, I also have Keith Redling with me tonight. Keith is with Raptellus Financial Consultants. They actually worked a little bit with your community on the water sewer utility as well, and they frequently partner with us throughout the Southeast when we start working on these type of utility evaluations. Ross mentioned a few of the communities we've worked with. Here's just a quick snapshot of communities throughout North Carolina that we've worked with throughout the years, as well as Raptellus. And I think kind of the take-home message here is it's a wide range of communities in size, from very small communities up to the Rollies and Charlottes and Fayettebills. There are very common themes for stormwater management, obviously, but the important thing is each community has different goals, different objectives, and their programs are all structured a little bit differently. So I think it's important to understand it's not a one-size-fits-all approach, and that every community is going to have a little bit different needs. Some are going to focus more on water quality because of impaired waters. Some are going to focus a little bit more on flooding, water quantity. So there's really a lot of different ways to set up a program. Which brings us to the question, why develop a stormwater program? Ross already mentioned some of the existing flooding problems you've had. You're certainly not alone. In recent years, there have been a lot of high-intensity storm events that have caused a lot of significant flooding damage, not, you know, for just, we're not just talking hurricanes, we're talking summer thunderstorms, right? You know, a couple inches of hard rain on a summer evening can cause substantial flooding damage. We also need to understand the impact of new development on your infrastructure. When you start to look at the older portions of your community, that infrastructure may have been in place for 50, 60, 70 years, and it really wasn't sized to handle the runoff that occurs when new development comes online. And so it's important to understand that the impacts of new development and how it impacts your system. It may seem like the flooding is becoming more frequent and more common, and there's actually statistical evidence that rainfall intensity has increased in our region, in the Southeast, in recent years. So there's been a lot of data showing the increased intensity of rainfall, which can lead to more frequent flooding events. So some of our old statistical data is constantly being updated by NOAA, and you're starting to see those rainfall amounts on what's more typical climb over time. I alluded to some of the older areas of town. Aging infrastructure is becoming a major issue when we talk about our stormwater systems. You hear a lot about aging infrastructure, you think about bridges, and you think about roads. You may think about your water sewer utilities, where they have to plan for the rehabilitation and maintenance and upkeep of the system. Well, the same thing is going to apply to stormwater infrastructure. Those pipes in the ground, those catch basins, those manholes, they don't last forever. And your typical design life is going to be in the 40- to 80-year timeframe, depending on the material of the pipe, whether it's metal or concrete, how it was installed, and several other factors. A lot of communities are grappling with what to do with this aging infrastructure, but what frequently happens is if you go to a run-to-failure mode, where you just wait till the infrastructure fails, there is going to be an increased overall cost. There's going to be an interruption of service. There may be closed roads. You certainly have, you know, public safety concerns, and then you have to figure out how to fund replacements. So if you don't have a dedicated funding stream, all of a sudden, you're having to pull money out of general fund to fix emergency repairs. And then the third item that really contributes to stormwater programs is regulatory requirements. And Ross alluded or mentioned that the MPDS MS4 program is one of those. That's a large driver for stormwater programs throughout the state, really throughout the country. So that program comes down from EPA and is delegated to the state to implement. The MPDS MS4 program is more focused on water quality than quantity. And what that means is that it's the realization that stormwater runoff contains pollutants. When it runs off of our rooftops and our sidewalks and our roadways, it carries pollutants with it into the creeks and the streams and the downstream water sources. So this MS4 program, again, really comes from EPA down to the state level. Now, Almaral is not currently designated by the state to have an MS4 program. However, they are going to be re-reviewing who is included in the program based off of the recent census results. So census results come out this year, and then next year, the state will be designating new communities for the MS4 program. And at that point, you know, given that the parameters are having a population greater than 10,000 and having a density greater than 1,000 per square mile, it's likely that the city could be designated into the program. So thinking proactively about managing and being ready for the MS4 program, you know, certainly could be a component of your stormwater program. So we talked a little bit about development, historical development, age of infrastructure. This data comes from Stanley County, and it looks at the year in which parcels are developed. And you can start to notice trends based off of the age of development and the age of the infrastructure. Now, it's not always going to currently align. Certainly, infrastructure gets replaced over time and does get maintenance. But those areas shown in red, the parcels shown in red, are greater than 80 years old. Orange would be 60 to 80, yellow 40 to 60, and then the newer development is in green and blue. So the city limits is in the southern portion of this map. You see the downtown area is, has a lot of density of red parcels. Obviously, that's some of the older sections of town. And then you can see some of the newer development, the blues and the greens, around the fringe of the city. And what happens is that water ultimately is going to get into the downtown area. So you have older infrastructure in the downtown area collecting additional water as development occurs, kind of in the fringe and perimeter of the city. The other item to note is that this entire purple area or outline is all of the water that ultimately comes into the city. So it's not just, you're not just dealing with city from Almaral, you're dealing with city from out in Stanley County, up near Richfield and New London. A lot of that water is draining through your community. So it's important to understand the impacts of that and understand how to manage that and potentially have, you know, long-term partnerships with your neighbors. And again, when you go back and look at what the design life was of your system, maybe that 40- to 80-year range, you can start to see the need to plan for replacement of infrastructure and to start to be ready for some of that infrastructure that is aging. So when we look at, really, the first step of kind of kicking off, developing your program is really evaluating the community, evaluating your goals, what you really want out of a stormwater program, because this is really the time that you can make a lot of these decisions and plan for the future. This is the part where we talk about not every community is going to do it the same way. Okay? Everybody's going to manage stormwater a little bit differently. And what we look at is two items, or two components are extent of service and level of service. Extent of service is what it sounds like, is where do you provide stormwater services? So when you think about stormwater, you're not going to go all the way up into somebody's side yard necessarily to maintain stormwater. You can, but there's an increased cost to that. Now, the historical way that a lot of communities managed was just to stay in the right-of-way. Just manage the right-of-way, get the water off the roads, and that was the limit of their extent of service. That's typically how the OT would, you know, serve their right-of-way. The issues with that, of course, is stormwater doesn't know property boundaries. So, you know, stormwater is going to flow into the right-of-way, out of the right-of-way, back into the right-of-way, and some of the solutions to your problems may be outside of the right-of-way. So talking through those issues and figuring out exactly what the city wants to do outside of the right-of-way, and because there's going to be a lot of different instances, a lot of what-if scenarios, is something that you really want to think through on the front end, because that's ultimately going to impact, you know, your level of service and cost. Level of service is the second component, and that's, you know, what are you going to provide? So we talk about where we're going to provide service, what type of service are we providing? Are we cleaning out ditches? Are we cleaning out pipes? Are we doing that once a year? Are we doing that once every three years? Starting to think about the level of service that you want to have in your program is going to, again, impact the overall cost of service. And then one of the big items is the, ultimately, is the capital improvement program. So as we start to identify projects and solutions to some of your flooding issues, that's going to go into your program, that's going to go into your overall cost, and then we start thinking about, okay, do I want to complete my capital program in 20 years? 30 years? 40 years? What's the timeframe? How much do we want to bite off? And all of that's going to start to drive that ultimate cost of service. You know, what's it going to take for you to provide the services that you say you want to provide? When we start to look at developing those capital plans, it's important to understand that stormwater really needs to be evaluated from a systematic perspective. It's very interconnected. We need to understand how the different components of the infrastructure interact together, because what you don't want to do is fix one problem and just move it downstream and create another problem. So an example would be, okay, we have an undersized culvert out of roadway. The easy solution is, hey, we have to make that culvert bigger, and then the roadway's not going to flow. That's great. All that water goes downstream and floods the next person downstream. So it's very important to understand that it is systematic, and we do need to look at the entire system and not just isolated project areas. And as we do that, we start to develop a prioritized capital plan. And having a quantifiable way to prioritize your projects is going to be critical, because we haven't worked with the community yet that could pay for all of their needs right away. So it's very important to have them prioritized, so that you know that you're tackling the most important, critical issues, and there's a lot of different ways to do that. And again, that's going to be specific to your community. What do you value the most? Obviously, most communities, you know, public safety and health, public safety is going to be a really highly prioritized component of that plan. Is there a risk of life and property destruction with some of the flooding? So then we really need to talk about, okay, well, how, and once we identify the capital plan, the cost of service, how do we start to generate the amount of money that we need to provide that cost of service? And I'm going to let Keith Redling with Raptellus talk a little bit about the money side of things.
Good evening, Council, I'm Keith Redling with Raptellus Financial Consultants. We are a financial consultancy focused on local government utilities headquartered in Charlotte. I grew up in Cornelius, North Carolina, and live in Cary. We have an office in Cary where I live. And as Tom said earlier, we frequently partner with WK Dixon on projects where there's an effort to quantify how some problems are going to be solved and a need to look at ways to fund the solutions. And in this case, we're talking about stormwater funding, and the part of the project that I would be most focused on is performing a study and possible implementation of a fee to fund capital and operation and maintenance efforts on the stormwater side. And the way that we go about that is to really focus on a legal approach to funding that's the fairest possible way. And I listened intently to the revaluation presentation earlier, because the man's in the same business I'm in, just a different part of it, when he said rates times value equals your tax bill. Similarly, for stormwater, a lot of communities will fund stormwater programs with, running them with taxes, with a fee. And so I'll be looking at that, looking at long-term planning, thinking about the fairest way to pay, and trying to make efficient choices that would be suitable long-term endeavors for the city. And stormwater funding through fees is not a super new idea anymore. There are at least 88 local governments in North Carolina that have, in their own way, every one of them has faced some similar issues to the ones that y'all are facing, which are a combination of aging infrastructure, worsening flooding, and regulatory requirements that are coming on stronger and stronger over time. Ross mentioned earlier that you're not an MS4 community yet, the municipal separate storm sewer requirements from the federal government. I can't imagine that you won't be soon at the size Almaral is. A lot of cities in the state smaller than Almaral have already been required to comply with those rules. So these communities, the very first one in North Carolina to do a fee was Charlotte, and that was in 1991, and I've helped with that a good bit over the years. The very last one in North Carolina to have rolled out a drainage fee was Durham County, and WK Dixon and Raptellus worked on that together, and that fee just went live July 1. 88 places, some of them are big, but some of them are quite small, places like Butter and Creedmore up north of Durham. And so I have been focused on this kind of work for Raptellus and run the stormwater part of our business since 1991, and worked with maybe about 50 communities on funding these kinds of stormwater issues. An important thing to say about all these is the unmet capital needs and the need to make pipes bigger and the need to clean out channels and the need possibly to do other things is a need that occurs gradually and worsens over a long period of time. And it's not a thing that you can solve in one, two, three, five years. It's a thing that's going to take a long time to fix too and get on top of. And an important issue is to balance your desire for the pace of the fixes with what that cost is going to be and what kind of cost that would cause your citizens to have to pay. And so we'll work a lot on that. Rome was not built in a day. These capital improvements to improve drainage would not occur overnight either. And I think with that, I'm back to you.
Great. Thank you, Keith. And just to wrap up with, you take a look at what the timeline could look like, what we're looking at here. The blue boxes, blue slash purple boxes, are related to the program development, the analysis, the engineering. The green boxes are related to the utility side of the study, the utility evaluation. So, you know, again, the first step is really to look at doing the community evaluation and figuring out what your program needs to look like, because we can't really start looking at the utility rate study until we understand a little bit about what level of service we want to provide. But hopefully, middle of this year, we'd be able to kick into the utility rate study, and that's going to start giving, Keith's going to start looking at different options, different ways to structure the utility. It's very much a collaborative process with staff. It's very much a collaborative process with as much, you know, as much feedback as you want to provide. You know, we're certainly happy to provide updates, and that's a pretty frequent occurrence, where we get feedback, we go back, we try some new, some different alternatives. But really, the key timeline, if we want to look at a July 22 utility implementation, is about early 2022, is really to have a decision point where City Council will be comfortable with what's been provided and be ready to go into the next stage of utility implementation. So at that point, that's the first green box and the first decision point. And then as you move into 2022, the next green box down would be when we're really doing the nuts and bolts of the utility implementation, getting it ready for billing on July 1, 2022. Now, there's certainly, the other tasks of the project can coincide, the other phases. So as the utility study is being completed, we will be looking at working on the studies, getting the program situated the way you need it, looking at what additional data needs there are to comply, to get the utility off the ground, and to really start the analysis and develop your capital program, so that that can really line up with the utility implementation. We think public outreach is important throughout the process. You know, we've already heard from the public that stormwater management was very important. It was a priority for the community, and I think it's important to keep them involved throughout the project, starting with, you know, what that program can be like, providing feedback, what their concerns are. And then also, as we move into the utility implementation, really reaching out, having discussions, and making sure that the program really fits the needs of the community. And then, you know, I want to finish with, you know, when we get to the point of really the fun stuff, building solutions, construction, designing construction, once we have those capital projects identified, we certainly recommend looking at alternative sources of funding. We want to leverage your dollar as far as we possibly can. So there are a lot of sources for external funding through federal agencies, state agencies, private agencies. A lot of the communities we've... A lot of the communities we work right, work with right now are pursuing the FEMA brick brands. So, they, there's a significant amount of money available right now for communities in similar positions. But usually, this funding comes into play when you start talking about design and construction. So, what these funding agencies want to see is that, okay, you have a project identified. We agree it's a good project. And what we try to do is match up the type of project with the, with the funding source. Some are going to be more related to solving flooding problems, some are going to be more related to water quality. So, it just really depends on the type of project, the most applicable funding source. So, with that, you know, I just want to thank you again for having us here tonight. And we'd be certainly happy to answer, answer any questions that you may have.
Council, questions? Ms. Hall?
Of course I would have them. So, this is the first we've seen of this, this cause, the first time that we've seen either of you. We did know that Ross and his group have been working on this and were had sought, had gone out to find the vendor that they wanted to use. If, in fact, we move forward to the first step, I did not hear, and I'm looking at you and I'm looking at Ross at the same time. The contract that we would enter into, what are the specifications on the contract that you will look out for, just to do the plan? For what period of time are we entering into? I just need to know all that.
We don't have a contract written as of yet.
Okay.
What we do have is the tasks that are associated to building this multi-year plan.
Okay.
So, it's still, what we're trying to figure out is if this is something that council is ready to move forward with.
Okay.
Going into the multi-year plan, the way that we had built this or the way that WK Dixon has built this process is a quote-unquote phased approach. There's about six steps. And if you look at his timeline, those are basically the steps to community evaluation and needs assessment, utility rate study, public outreach. And you can see how some of these kind of overlap and mesh together.
Okay, then hang tight, just let me reiterate this then. So, we are month eight into 20, 2021 budget.
Correct.
You said you had found money out of the general fund.
Yes.
And then I heard that horrible word and fund balance that you're talking about through the end of June, right? The June, this fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay.
If, if we could get started, to meet this timeline, we would need to go ahead and get started to try to meet the timeline to where that July 2022, July 1, 2022, if council chooses to move forward with the fee base to try to fund this, this, this program, that would be the timeline that we were asking for to look at. Now, again, there's going to be some variables. And there's, there is a, some ways we can massage this as well too on the, the overall cost. Because some things can wait, some things are all going to depend upon the, the information that we have.
Okay, strike that when we go back over here. And it might be to the fiscal model. Just from hearing what I just listened to you particularly on the fiscal part of it, is this, is this a, I don't like to use the word tax, but is it an assessment based on valuation of real estate? Is that what it would be?
No, ma'am. The stormwater fees are, are a fee, not a tax. And they're based on demand for service, more like water and sewer. So, if you think about drinking water utility, you charge people based on the demand for service.
Okay.
You measure the demand with the meter. So, I've got a meter here, I read it, that's how much water they used, and I charge them for the water.
Right.
On the stormwater side, the problems that we have that relate to flooding and water pollution both have to do with how much water is getting to the creek.
Right.
And therefore, they have to do with how much water is coming off of different properties.
Right.
So, if you took two different properties in Albomoral, and one was an acre of woods and one was an acre of pavement or roof, when it rains a given amount, you get a lot more water off of the pavement or roof than you do woods. So, the stormwater fee is typically based on characteristics of the property that allow you to estimate how much runoff is coming off of the property when it rains.
Stop right there, okay? Which gets me into what brought us here to begin with, okay? In June and months prior to that, when we had a lot of runoff, we had a lot of flooding. And we had a lot of folks from this cap, from the city, citizens that were coming with pictures of their houses and their property. And a lot of it was, I mean, it was not their water, okay? It was water from up the creek, no pun.
Came from uphill.
No pun, up the creek. And part of what we did implement in June, as I'm telling my folks, is that we gave an authorization for city to go out and to clean out, clean up rightaways and clean up branches and those kinds of things, which has alleviated a great deal of what we have found that led us to right here. But I guess in my pea-sized brain, and I guess this is what y'all do, is that you will be able to help us determine, whoever that is on there, please mute yourself, up creek, where it's coming from, as to be able to determine who's charged that amount or who has assessed that amount. And so, I'm really having a hard time wrapping my heads around it. And I'm, I'm glad you're here, okay? I'm glad we're looking at doing this. But what I don't want folks that watch this now or watch it tomorrow, or there they are assessing another charge, even though the community assessment said this needs to be done. And I'm, I'm thrilled at the timing of it's like that. Thanks for that one. And I think the last thing is you've given us 88 similar places in North Carolina. And I saw some counties on there. And then you mentioned Creedmore and Butler, or Butler.
Butler.
Anywhere any closer to square footage to Albomoral?
Yeah, there are some places in the state that are pretty similar to Albomoral that have fees like this. Mooresville has one, Mooresville is bigger than y'all, but they're not huge.
Right.
Kernersville's got one, they're just a little bit bigger than y'all, right there at Winston-Salem. Elizabeth City has one, they're essentially exactly your size.
Right.
The reason I mentioned Butler and Creedmore is I wanted everybody on council to realize the first few places that did these fees in North Carolina were big cities.
Oh, yeah.
Now, that was because they had a mandate to deal with water quality issues way back then that didn't happen to everybody yet. My point about some of them being very small places is you don't have to be a big city for it to be an efficient way to fund it.
I think for our citizens that, going back to what Congressman Timberholt said, addressed Ross is, and I think out of that meeting, the fee back in June, the people were saying, what can you do to clean out these creeks? What can you do to alleviate that? I think what they have to realize based upon what I'm hearing is that this is a more extensive problem than going to a creek where they're coming out of Richfield with Town Creek, which starts from the bottom like that is a, is a, is a width. And you see what happens as it goes down towards the south side of town. So, I just want our folks to understand that, you know, this is more than just cleaning out a creek. It's, it's far more extensive than that. And that's where they need to know where their money is going to be spent.
Absolutely. And, you know, O and M or operation and maintenance is a component. If you go back to some of those earlier slides of what's included in the stormwater program, regular O and M is important, cleaning out catch basins.
O and M, give us.
Operation and maintenance.
Okay, and that's for everybody listening.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, that's, that is the cleaning out the creeks. That is cleaning out the catch basins. And that's doing it, funding it so you can do it proactively. And you may need more crews than you currently have to be able to do to clean out the system on a proactive basis so that when the storm comes, it's already cleaned out. So, that's certainly one big component of your program. But talking to some of the bigger issues, there are flooding problems that are not going to be resolved from maintenance alone. And that's where we need to look at some, some other solutions, increasing the size of infrastructure. You could possibly looking at detention areas upstream to kind of hold the water back, slow it down. You could talk, you could be looking at floodplain improvements. It's really trying to look at a variety of different solutions within your capital program to help reduce the risk of flooding.
There's been considerable discussion in the legislature the last few years about impervious surface. And there's been some definition changes. Are most cities assessing their fee based on pervious surface, on service?
I would say the majority of them are.
Pretty much all of them are. Well, I was just going to say, the impervious surface definition changes from the legislature have a direct impact on development requirements and thresholds at which new development or redevelopment has to meet onsite stormwater controls. But they don't change the, what the, the nature of the perviousness of the surfaces. So, there's nothing about those legislative changes that have occurred in the last few years that have caused any of these cities and counties that have drainage fees to need to change the rate structure. The rate structure is legal, it's held up in court. And it basically charges based on the amount of runoff that's coming off a property.
Would you tell, did you tell me an average or an average range of what other locations are seeing that charge?
For the fee? I could. So, there are places in North Carolina that have fees as low as a couple of dollars a month for a house. And there are places in North Carolina that have fees as high as about $12 a month for a house. The average is close to halfway between those two. So, here's the rest of the story. When you tax fund drainage issues, the vast majority of the money that you collect comes from single-family residential properties and their taxes. When you go to the fee and you charge based on hard surface area, if your fee was $4 for a house per month, your fee for a large developed property with a big parking lot would be more than $4. It would be $4 times how much hard surface area that property had compared to a house. So, if that property had as much hard surface area as 50 houses, you'd charge them 50 times what you charge a house. So, it's very similar to water or, or electricity or natural gas, except that we don't have a meter. That measurement of impervious area becomes our surrogate for the meter.
Mayor, if I can add, not only to the, the issue of equity that they just spoke to in terms of who pays the fee, you know, I don't know that this is anybody's thought, but just I want to share this and get this out there is that if, you know, if we're talking about a tax-funded fee, there's the equity issue that he just covered. But also, we got to remember, when we adopt our budget, every penny we bring in of property practices doesn't even fund the police and fire department. You know, it would take another 19, 20 cents just to fund those two departments with property taxes. So, you know, we're saying we have a lot of needs beyond that, just to serve what we do now. So, funding out of, out of just the general property tax base is not really a practical option nor an equitable one, in my view. And I would like to also say too, talking about O and M, operation and maintenance, since last year's date, it has been a collective effort with public works, parks and recreation, public utilities. We have been addressing these in a more reactive way where we've been cleaning out creeks and streams from public utilities. And with the help of parks and rep, cleaning out debris under bridges, and even with public works department going out and doing extra maintenance and catch basins. That in itself, what we've done in the past year stretches us thinner on what our regular job responsibilities for each department are doing as well. So, that, that goes along with the need of a good, steady O and M plan on our stormwater system. Because we have been doing more than what we've been doing in the past, but it's taken all departments and it stretches us thin from a capacity goal when we have to do these things.
And that's important. It's reiterated that it's a bigger problem than what we perceive. I see a lot of water. And it's, it's, we've got certain areas in town that are more prone to excessive flooding than others. And I, and some of the creeks, I've looked at them, and they're certainly a lot better than what they were. Thus, we're not getting some of this backup in the backyards that we've seen previously. And you guys have done a great job, I appreciate that. I know the citizens do too. But again, and when we start talking money, people that are listening, oh, it's all of a sudden, it's a ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching type thing. But this is a value-added, in my opinion, as to what we already have. And to achieve what we need to do is going to take a collective effort from everybody to make this thing work so that the O and M is something that, it never really decreases a lot, but it's going to be more efficient in terms of keeping the, the stormwater from building up around the town.
Mr. Williams?
I'm trying to make this question short, it was long. Part of our problems tend to not be caused by the right-of-way, it's caused by infrastructure on private property. How do most cities handle that? When you were talking about scope, where we provide service? What do most cities do about that? Do they fund to go onto private property to fix parts of the infrastructure?
So, it is different for, for everybody. And that does relate back to the, to the level of service that you want to provide. Some communities will go on private property only if they have an easement. So, a lot, a lot of communities are starting to require easements for new development on the entire stormwater drainage infrastructure. So, when you go ahead and bring your development plans in to get approved, you have to have every channel, swale, pipe that's on private property and a drainage, drainage easement. So, that's one way they can then maintain it into the future. One of the areas that is often looked at as a, as kind of the starting point for the system is the portion of the system that collects public water. So, as soon as you have a public roadway and water drains off of that roadway into private property, well, then that private property is then carrying what's called public water because some of that water came from the public right-of-way. And at that point, communities will start to pick that up as part of their system. Now, getting back to the level of service, what level of service they provide in that portion of the system may change, okay? They may, they may be open to spending utility dollars for a capital improvement project. If something is identified as being undersized or needing work, they may, if they can get easements, they may do work on those private properties, but they may not maintain it on a regular basis. Now, some communities put more into O and M, operation and maintenance, and then they do maintain that portion of the system. So, that's one of the decision points kind of early in that evaluation is how much work do we want to do on private property? And how much is that going to affect the cost of, cost of service?
Because it's part of the process to map the entire stormwater system. Because some of it is probably 80 or 100 years old. And older areas may not even know exactly where it goes.
And that's, that's one of the challenges we have right now. So, yes, as you get into the watershed planning portion of the project, that's what's included in that pilot watershed study and capital plan. To be able to really do those studies, you need to know what your system looks like. So, part of that process is, is mapping, mapping the system. And as you, you know, if you become designated as an MS4, mapping a part of the system would be required as part of your permit. But there's also just the idea, like you said, you need to really understand if it rains at this location, where does the water go? And, and a lot of communities also, you know, you have aging infrastructure, you might have pipes under houses, under buildings that become very difficult to maintain. And it almost becomes very difficult to open that system back up. And so, a lot of communities are trying to move their infrastructure back to the right-of-way to the extent possible. So, I'm actually working on a job in Fayetteville right now where there's a backyard channel that carries all of the stormwater right through backyards where there's fences and sheds and trees and really impossible to maintain the system. So, the city's going to move that drainage to the right-of-way so that then they can maintain it. And then they would not then maintain the system in the backyards because that becomes private drainage. So, there's a lot of different ways to do it, but it's something that communities are really wrestling with right now. I know Raleigh and others have drainage assistance programs where they'll cost share, especially some of the smaller projects, they'll cost share with property owners on maybe 50/50 or there's other, other splits as well. And again, that's another component that we will be talking about when developing the program, if that's something that the city would be interested in.
Mr. Ferris, are you asking council to give you authority to move forward and bring us back sometime to a proposed contract? Or what are you?
Or what are you asking council to do?
I think based on what Mr. Olssasser said, that a contract would have to come back to council. And then we would be specific with where some of those funds that he mentioned come from. We've had that discussion, and there are some areas identified. But this portion of the project, you know, we've talked a lot about fees to maintain what we do and be somewhat self-sustaining based on the level of service. But right now, we have no plan, we have no analysis. So this is, this is up to us to go ahead and pay for it. There would be a combination of some identified funds through some savings in the fiscal year in public works. And then there would have to be some appropriation of fund balance to make that work, to get it started, to get it to a point that when there was a utility fee, it could then be self-sustaining.
So you're asking us to give you authority to move forward and bring it back to council? Council, what's your thoughts?
One follow-up question before we do that. Just, this is not council's first hearing of MS4 in the last six months. Six months ago, I was led to believe that we probably wouldn't get that designation. Four months ago, the first time we heard it. And now I understand from the professionals here that we probably will. Is that your take, is that we probably will get that designation?
That would be my thoughts for two reasons. You certainly have a greater than ten thousand population.
Right.
The density at the last estimate, you were probably borderline on the thousand per square mile if you look at the entire city area. But you, it really depends on how they calculate density, because you have certain areas of the community that obviously would exceed that thousand per, per square mile on a density basis. So I think from that standpoint, once the census results come in, I think it would be likely that you could, you could be designated. We've seen communities that are smaller than Alamoara be designated as MS4s. Some of that is because they are approximate to more urban areas. So there's a small community hole that we're gonna be working with, it's right between Gastonia and Charlotte. So it's a much smaller community than Alamoara, but it's in proximity.
But they're touching Belmont and Gastonia, so yeah, it's that.
But then the other issue is that there are impaired waters within your city limits. And that's another trigger that will likely cause the state to take a closer, closer look. So we can't, we can't say with certainty one way or the other, I think we'll know very soon. I think there's elements of the MS4 program that you would wanna incorporate in your stormwater program anyway. But there, if you do get brought in to the MS4, then there will be permitting requirements and some additional requirements that would take regular, a regular funding stream to be able to meet those, those requirements.
So follow-up to the mayor is, from what I understand, Mr. Fares. This is just letting him take the next step. We're not entering into anything and not committing to any kinds of funds at this point. Even though the committee, and thank you for all that you all did, have looked through and vetted the different vendors and have come up with this one as a, that's the understanding, is that right?
So I just wanna clarify that we've got to the point where we have a scope of work and the fee structure. We worked with Michael to identify how we can fund the contract. So what we're asking for is council to approve us moving forward with entering into a contract. That would mean that they would develop the contract, it would go through our contract process, we'd review, and then we would bring it back to city council for approval.
Okay. I think that's what the mayor was trying to get out of Michael, those specifics.
Right, that's what we have.
So basically, the motion would be to direct staff to develop a contract with DK Dixon for a stormwater plan to present to council.
And program.
Right.
Is that?
Yes.
It's a two, two-part?
Yes.
Is that your motion? Motion by Councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
Exactly by Councilmember Aldridge for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you to the committee.
Thanks for having us.
Moving on to number seven, litter control partnership between the City of Alamoara and Keep Standing Beautiful.
Good evening, council, thank you for time for seeing us. I know you got busy. Pat, where's Pat? There, there you go. Y'all come on up. Guys, in addition to being the RPO director, I'm also now head of the Keep Standing Beautiful. We're a small group and around about twelve years. We have a section of twenty-four, twenty-seven bases from McDonald's right there at Blue Bay down to Rock Creek Park Bridge. We maintain and keep up, we are trying to do more with, keep doing more little control around the county. And again, I'm sure this is not news to anybody, the trash has gotten really much, much worse. I don't, there's many speculation what's going on, more takeout food, DOT's not picking up like they used to, yada, yada, yada. I think we're just inundated, we can't handle it. And we actually, before coming forward, we actually talked to Ross and Nikki. And I'm sorry, I wanted to, of course, pack around it, Tom Medlin, they're two of our folks that help us pick up. We usually have about anywhere from sixty-eight people that get together on a regular basis in the middle of our section. Unfortunately, a lot of times, within a few days, it's back just as dirty as it was before. So it is a serious problem, and it is getting worse. And again, it's something that we have realized we can't handle. We didn't come here to point fingers, say, y'all need to clean up the city. We're trying to say, what can we do, you know, we need to take a different approach to this. Again, Ross and Nikki, we've reached out, we are tentatively come up with a plan, kind of a new acronym, I know we have tons of them, but it's Almoora Litter Team. We're gonna try to combine our efforts and try to get on, and it's not as much just cleaning up regularly. One thing, we do need to get it cleaned up. We've got to really do it more of an outreach, public service, something. I ain't brought up, I'm sure most of you remember the old campaign that had the Indian that was crying at the end of the commercial. It used to be broadcasting, that give a hoot, don't pull a hoot type of thing. I don't, I don't think there's any kind of slogans or campaigns out there now for kids or even, or at all. So we're looking at ideas, looking for ways where we can get a tackle this problem, not just clean it up, but also keep it from getting dirty again. One of the things we discussed was adopting a, Adopt a Street program within the city. We, Keep Standing Beautiful, would be happy to champion something like that, if we combine our resources. And again, reach out and do public service, or again, Adopt a Street, but we've gotta do something. I think the, part of the problem is it's becoming a social norm that litter's okay, or somebody else will pick it up. I know that's not always, I'm not trying to point fingers at people, but that's, that's the only thing I'm thinking of that's going on out there. Just folks are just complacent and assuming somebody else is gonna clean it up. And unfortunately, we'll have to do that in the, in the beginning, but we've gotta come up another way to, again, prevent this from continuing. Because I think we just have to reject this whole way of doing things. I mean, and it's, it's not as much just our area, I bought a couple of articles, y'all might have seen it in the last Sunday's paper. It's statewide. It is not just our community, small community, it's all over. But we can't just look at everywhere else, say, well, it's going on there, it's just, it's gonna happen here too. I think we can, you know, do something about this and make, keep this place a beautiful place to live and grow and, and just, we can't accept this for our community, but I want, I want Ross and Nikki to talk a little bit too as well. And, because I get on, share, I think we, I've sent a couple, if there's an IT person, I wanted to maybe, if they just play the video. Ironically, one of the, if you go over there by, right by the Welcome to Alamoara sign right across from Rock Creek Park, it's filthy, it's been like that, I mean, I actually wanted to stop there several times and pick it up. But I just said, well, I wanted to bring it up for this particular reason. But I know a lot of these roads are not Alamoara's. And we, but it goes back to, we really can't count on DOT, anybody else to help. I think we need to take this and do something about ourselves. But please, Ross, Nikki, if y'all can interject as well.
Thanks, Lee. We had a good conversation, I guess, last week with Lee and some of the other members of Keep Standing Beautiful. Nikki and I started having conversations about litter probably three weeks ago, maybe, or more, four weeks ago. And, you know, because we've seen it, and there was reasons behind some of it, but then again, it's just logical thinking too. But we got together, another group with the city staff, Nikki, Lisa, again, has been active with Keep Standing Beautiful, myself, Renee Desai, the Assistant Public Works Director, David Doolin, and Star Gaines, who is, I believe, is the Community Outreach Officer there with the police department. We, we got on the phone call with Keep Standing Beautiful, and one of the things that we did talk about, one of the things we discussed is what we could do together to partner to help move the city forward a little bit. At least being a little bit more proactive again with our approach to litter. And one of the things that we've talked about is it's hard for us to clean up litter when it's really a cultural problem and a, and a just overall issue with public outreach and education. Because like Lee said, and something the Public Works Department does, and it's always been one of our services that we provide to the city, is we pick up litter. And then like he said, two days later, you go back and it's the same as it was. So just providing that service is not the solution. What we've gotta do better is we've got to start putting out more public outreach, start notifying residents, start holding people more accountable for litter if we see them doing it. So what we, what Renee and I put together one day, and I've shared this with Nikki, and then I shared it with the Keep Standing Beautiful folks last week, is I've got a three-phase approach to how we're gonna try to move forward with this. At least from the city's perspective and partnering with KSB. The first phase is something that we could do immediately. And basically, that's what I was just talking about, this public information, social media, bill stuffers, start putting out litter facts, start putting out bullet points for clean neighborhood facts, and how, how litter affects the quality of life. You know, it's, it's just a boundary in some cases. And most people, if they see litter, they're gonna throw litter out. Other communities, and there's facts that say this, if you ride through a clean community, people are less likely to throw trash out. If they see it, they'll throw it out, they think it's okay. So public outreach is gonna be the big thing, and that's something that we can start immediately. Renee's been working on some presentations and some PEFs that you'll probably start seeing pushed out through social media, hopefully by the end of this week, if not, starting tomorrow. So be sure you like and share those things. The second phase, we'll start promoting the Alamoara Adopt a Street program again. We've always had the Adopt a Street program here in the city. I don't know how long it's been around, I know five, six years ago, we revamped it a little bit. But again, from an administrative standpoint, it's hard to find social groups and clubs and individuals to adopt streets and then count on them to stay on task with it. Our, our current policy and our current contract with our Adopt a Street program requires a person, if they adopt a street, to clean it up four times a year. Well, tomorrow, someone might be all in, I'm gonna clean up this street, I'm gonna adopt it. But four months from now, something may change. It could be a life event, some leader in that, in that group might move on and somebody else has taken over, and they don't know that this is happening. So from the city staff perspective, it's been fairly difficult for us to keep in touch with some of these leaders of these civic groups or individuals to say, hey, it's your turn to go pick up this street again. It's just hard to do administratively. We have to depend on organizations to do it themselves. But we're gonna try to ramp that up a little bit more, stay on task with trying to send out reminders of people to clean their streets up, those type things. That in itself should help. We do have lists of streets around the city that are our hot streets, that we have to visit all the time. So when we do reach out to people, or if we have people call, we have those lists readily available of the street names and say, hey, this is a street you can adopt. It may not be right in your neighborhood, but it might be somewhere close by to where you can go do it three times a year, or four times a year. That being said, we're gonna request our leadership team here in the city to adopt a street somewhere here in Alamoara. That would be a community outreach just for the leadership team to do. I would challenge city council to adopt a street. We've got plenty of signs, and we can put whoever's name on it we want, and I can assign you a street tomorrow, just give me a call. So those are, that's our, that's our second phase that I know that we can implement right now. The third phase is gonna take city involvement, Keep Standing Beautiful's involvement, and it's gonna take you as politicians reaching out to other community leaders to get involved. We need to schedule more community outreach, we need to schedule more community plans. Because from a city's capacity standpoint, we can't schedule these events all the time. We need to depend on, and if you look and you do Google searches, I've done it, other successful municipalities that have good community cleanups, they have civic groups, they have organizations. And those civic groups and organizations, just like KSB, they do it on their own. They contact the city and say, hey, can you give us trash bags, can you give us gloves, we'll be glad to do that. But if they spearhead it themselves, it's hard for us to take that task on all the time. So that's gonna be the third phase in our approach, is to try to find civic groups, active groups, schools, whoever, and give them the information to try to, you spearhead these, these community events. Do it two times a year, three times a year, four times a year. And not just one community group, we need multiple community groups. And having that activity around town, hopefully in the long term, we'll start seeing a big impact and we'll start seeing things. That's our approach and how we're gonna try to address it moving forward.
Ross, some of the other cities, do they, who coordinate that? Does it like, do the groups just contact the city?
In, in most cases, it's, to be honest, in most cases, it's volunteer groups. The city, the, the city component and involvement is that, you know, we offer the programs, and we can help supply, you know, the trash bags, the gloves, and support any type of group like that. And then we pick up the trash and we dispose it. But actually coordinating everything is, is hard, it's just hard to do.
Well, and I was wondering if a lot of cities, if that was the way that someone did, if they were successful as far as having someone who just coordinated groups, maybe contacted groups. We've got Target Challenge, we have a lot of scout troops, we've got, I mean, there's, like you said, there's tons of local groups. And I think you were right also, there's a, there's a little stretch on Ridge Street that I picked up not too long ago. And it stayed clean for probably at least three weeks. And I noticed last week, I gotta get back out there tomorrow, there's a few pieces. But the more trash that's out there, the more people are gonna throw it out. And it is, if you drive east from here to a beach, we're not, we're not the worst.
Well, and we've hit it, we've hit a perfect storm here lately. And I, and you know, again, not to make excuses, but one of the budget needs that we had in the Public Works Department last year was our vac-all truck. Originally, we had budgeted to try to get a new vac-all truck. And our vac-all truck is really what goes out and maintains our ditches and picks up litter as well. It serves multiple, multiple functions. Instead of purchasing a new vac-all truck, we, we refurbished it. So since July, our vac-all truck has been out of commission. So some of the neighborhoods and some of the communities that you see around town that have not been addressed is because the vac-all truck has been out of town and the shop being refurbished. We finally got it back. There's still some work that needs to be done, but we were able to run for the past two weeks. We've been able to do some of the neighborhoods that have been highly impacted. On top of that, some of the issues is the DOT, the lack of funding. They don't have their cleanup plan funded anymore. So that in itself compounds the issue. And that's something that the City of Alamoara Street Division does not do, we do not pick up litter on state roads. We'll do our own city streets, but we don't pick up litter on state roads. Ridge Street is a state road. So just to give that a little bit of information and let you know, that's, it's kinda has been the perfect storm when it comes to the amount of litter that you see out there.
Ross, click on the litter video that you leave warning us to see.
Yeah, there is, this one. This just goes from the old Greenhouse Forest shop right there going towards the, where's the one?
Red, red.
Going back towards town.
It's how depressing, it's how depressing it looks when you drive into our town from Norman.
Well.
That was outstanding.
Yeah, but if you get down to the Welcome to Alamoara sign, there's just, I mean, there's probably four or five bags of trash there. But these are pictures of us doing our thing. So again, I didn't want to inundate you guys with a lot of photos, because I think everybody sees the problem. And one thing I have done, I've reached out to Abby Smith with the judicial system. We're trying to like incorporate as much as We're trying to like incorporate as much help, I mean, there's, I did call the prison system. They used to have work crews picking up, they don't do that anymore. But there are people constantly needing community service out. And so there, we're waiting to hear back from them. Apparently, when I reached out to them, they were very excited because I think there is a lack of, of work out there for people to do, so we're hoping to incorporate that as well. But we are going to be going for, and, and this is, again, this is not just an Alamoale. We're going to go before the county board, we're going to go before the school system. I mean, some of the schools around are, are terrible too. But again, everybody's stressed. Now, the, my first, or most people's answer is like, let's just go hire some people to take care of this. I know that's not feasible. But we are, I think from Chris, Chris mentioned Nikki, that there's the Stanley Foundation. We might can get an endowment or some kind of something where we can get some funding, maybe hire somebody part-time. I know that might be years down the road, but at least we're going to try to succeed now. So, but again, we are just lucky, we're very excited to team up with Ross and Nikki and the, and the city. And we will spearhead and help manage any of these programs like the Adopt a Street, anything we can help. Just having the city's resources would be a great asset. So again, we just want to keep you guys, we're open to suggestions. But Tom and Patrick, y'all, Tom, you want to say something?
I would like to say a couple of things.
Sure, please.
I've been a member of the Adopt a Highway program, two highways for about 20 years. I'm a citizen of Alamoale, live here on Montgomery Avenue since 1997. I have a grabber in my car, and you probably know what I'm talking about when I say a grabber in my trunk. You can buy those things for 10 or 15 bucks. If you're out sometime, you might see me on a four or five block area going down Montgomery, picking up litter. The thing that dismays me is I seem to be the only person doing that in the entire city on that street. So that troubles me that we can't enlist more citizens in Alamoale to get involved. Without any suggestion by signage that we're acknowledging there is a problem, we're complacent. Each and every week, it comes right back, you pick it up, it comes right back. There's nothing in your face for the general public to see that we're disappointed by that or we're discouraged that all this is out there. There needs to be some public signage to tell people littering is just totally inappropriate. There needs to be some signs that say, we're going to fine you for it. I would love to see signs that say you're under video surveillance at this intersection. Terrible intersections where it's a, it's a constant problem. But we need to find some way to incite people and enlist them to, to become active. You know, as a citizen of Alamoale, I think you need to be inspired enough to clean up your block or your, your yard or your curb. Or sometimes, you know, I'll go two or three blocks away and pick up somebody else's trash because I'm just sick of looking, I'm very passionate about trash. And I think more people should be. And one thing we've talked about in these Keep Stanley Beautiful meetings in the past is the initiation of a citywide program about pride, reinstating pride in Alamoale. That could come from this office. In other words, it comes from the mayor's office. We all need to find some way to, I think, inspire people to get responsible about, you know, trash. It doesn't need to lie in your face every day all up and down the street. It's a, it's a repulsive problem and it exists all through the City of Alamoale and through every city and state in America. It's a big problem. We've just got to find some way to get some help.
Ross, I'd encourage you to start a advertising on social media too about the Bust a Bug program with the city and the Swat a Bug program with the Highway Patrol so that people would maybe let them know so they get a letter telling them, we saw you throwing out the trash. I mean, we need to get them going again. I don't know how successful the Swat a Bug is because that's outside the city.
What is that?
It's a program just like we adopted here at Bust a Bug where if somebody sees you throwing out trash, they can send you your license plate number in and you'll get a letter from the chief or the colonel or the first sergeant.
You take city maintenance crews though, for instance, when they're out working at street corners, they could be wearing a uniform that says on the back, please don't trash our town. Please don't litter our city, take pride in your community. Hats could wear as some sort of a slogan. There's a number of ways to bring that to the attention of the average guy walking down the street.
We even talked about when Chief Doolin has one of those pull behind flashing signs. We even like thought about trying to get one ourselves and post it in bad areas. Say, you know, please clean this up, you know, don't look, just, you know, I mean, it seems so simple. But again, it's just, I think we have to kind of reinstate that in people's minds that this is not okay. So, but again, this is, again, we, we didn't come here just to present problems. We came here, we're going to be working with Ross and Nikki to create solutions that will hopefully be alerting you guys to in the very near future. But we're just kind of letting you know what we're getting ready to do and hopefully be getting your support and then as the program's going on, I'm sorry.
First of all, Ross, thank you for all your efforts to keep Alamoale and Stanley County clean. I, I will say that the timing of this conversation is, is, is perfect. I've had two complaints over the last two weeks from folks that live down near the Stanley County Fairgrounds. And although I haven't personally seen it, in, in most situations, when people have complained that they see the trash trucks coming down the road and stuff just flying out on top of it. So one of the things that, I mean, I think everything that we can do would be a, would be a help. Maybe we could, you know, send letters from the city to, to anybody who uses our landfill. And just, just trying to make them aware that we've had complaints about trash trucks. I've already spoken with one person, but a lot of people use that landfill down there. So maybe any company that, that brings those big trucks in down there, I'm not sure what the protocol is for how they secure the trash and whatnot. But again, I haven't seen it, but I feel very confident that it does happen because I've had two people tell me that, you know, they go out in their yards, pick up trash and, you know, a couple of those trash trucks come by and it looks like, you know, Third World Country the next day. So, you know, I think that might be one thing that we as a city can do. And I think bringing the awareness of will, will be a, will be a big thing as well. But anything we can do, I think, will be a help.
Another big problem in the city is the trash containers at the street. You don't require people to put their trash in a bag and zip it before it goes in the can. So there's lots of loose trash. And whenever they come and flip that thing up into the truck, often when they sit it down, trash hits the street. If everybody who had that trash can, the responsible for that particular can, would police their area of the street every time the trash is picked up. If they would just pick that up, that would be a big help. A lot of that just lays in the street, gets blown down, half a block in there, there it is when somebody picks it up. There's a lot of loose trash laying in those cans.
Yeah, but the video that you showed, that was shown just a few moments ago, I told the person I was talking to, I saw a ride down there before the next council meeting. So yesterday afternoon, I rode down there. And the point was made, right across from Rock Creek where the City of Alamoale sign is, it's extremely cluttered. And then when you go on past the, you know, Trinity Place down there, it's, it's the same all the way to the... I rode, actually, I rode all the way down and then got on the Sonya Road and went all the way to landfill. And it's, it's definitely a huge issue.
It is a requirement for all loads that come into our landfill facility to be tarped. And all commercial haulers know that policy. Whether or not they're tarping their loads out on the highways, that's hard for us to police. But when they come across the scales into the city landfill, they are tarped and covered.
Ross, one word that you threw out earlier was accountability. And listening to everything, never heard that come back up again. What's the fine for littering, chief?
$250 minimum, taking it up to $1,000 before it's upheld.
And it used to be signed out on, like, you'd have $250 fine for littering. I don't see those much anymore on there. Are those state signs that they put up? Exactly. Yeah, you've got a two-phase problem here. You've got the people that are littering and then the people who are taking it upon themselves to pick it up. And you can't eliminate the second one. The only one you can eliminate is the first one. So there's got to be some accountability in there for people to not arbitrarily just throw it out because they see other trash out there. We're going to be working on that. So I think in conjunction, you've got to have something that says that there's some meat in this program. And you throw it, we pick it up, but you throw it, you get called, and you're going to pay the price. Or put them out on the street for public service for four weeks, four Saturdays in a row.
You also have to inspire some young people to get involved in cleaning up. The average age of the Keep Stanley Beautiful group is probably seven plus. It's about six or eight individuals regularly go out and pick up. That's it.
We need some help. And I think this is, has an impact on people who are looking to come here to live, to open businesses. If it looks like trash, it's not very welcoming to them. So I think there's a, a big effort that we are going to have to make. And we, we just, when Chris and I are out picking up trash, we will have sometimes people wave and say, thank you, but nobody says we'll come help you.
I've been a Realtor for 24-plus years with Century 21 here in Alamoale. In December, I sold some acreage just outside the city headed west on 73. Just as you cross the City Lake Bridge. When I went out there with those folks the last time, the litter was so pervasive, it was terrible. And they're from Concord, and we talked about it as we walked along, to show them how bad the litter problem is in Stanley County, especially that part heading out. It's everywhere, but you know, that's not been picked up since. If you go out there tomorrow morning and cross that bridge, you'll see how horrific it is that you cross the bridge and just be on. We've got to do something about it, to me.
Ms. Wilder?
I just wanted Ross to introduce the people that are wanting to add to this staff. For the record's sake. Pat Bramlin.
Okay, I'm Lee Snuggs, the director for the Rock River RPO, but also president of Keep Stanley Beautiful. Pat Bramlin, Tom Medlin, and we have several others. But again, for safety's sake, we just asked for a few people to come up. But we have about 68 people regularly, you know, go come to meet and help clean up. So, and we are, again, we're very excited that Ross and Nikki reached out to us. We'll be working with them to come up some ideas. So we're probably coming back before the council in the near future with some proposals, ideas, hopefully some ways to tackle this problem. But again, we're just kind of letting everyone know what, what's, what's coming out of the pipe. If there's nothing else, I think we'll get out of y'all's way and we appreciate everybody's time.
Ross, if you want to meet again, please include me. I've got some ideas I want to present to both organizations.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, if you would come out, I want to ring, let you introduce your planting and development services staff, planting specialist, and you chief Tony for a while.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is Ashley Tolliver Jones and Tommy Evans. Ashley is our planting specialist. She is from Texas.
From Fort Worth.
From Fort Worth. And she has a, a number of years working in planning departments and code enforcement departments before coming here and moving to North Carolina. She lives in Wade'sboro now.
I used to work for the tax assessor in the government center there for Larry Newton. And I worked very closely with Joe Dutton as well.
And Ashley will be doing our, she does HRC and then also addressing and signs and planning board and several other things. Tony is from Rockingham.
From Rockingham originally?
Southern Pines.
Southern Pines, but he lives in Rockingham now. And Tony's got over 20 years of law enforcement experience and about three or four years of code enforcement experience for the city of Fayetteville. And, and Tony is primarily working at minimum housing and commercial maintenance code, those kind of the structural issues that you might have in the city.
With James Lester.
Uh, well, he's taking over with James.
That's what I'm saying.
He's still working with James a little bit.
He's worked with James for a little while.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, we're pretty much, I think, I don't think we really had to do a whole lot with him recently. We kind of transitioned everything over. But we keep James on the, on, on speed dial too for some of these cases, so.
Welcome to both of you. We're glad to have you on board and we hope you get busy in a hurry.
Thank you, nice to be here.
Thank you.
So who, and so this is part of your staff. Who's else, who else is still with you?
We've got Jay here. Jay, Jay Colwells?
Yeah.
Jay's our development coordination specialist.
And Ellie.
Ellie Shield, that's right. Iris Coggins, and Ron Epps, and Rachel Smith.
Aren't you glad you're not in Fort Worth?
Oh, yeah, my, uh, my mama has not lost power yet, but it is touch and go. So there, I know a lot of people that have lost power already.
Thank you.
Well done.
Kevin, we'll let you go ahead and move into number eight, presentation of the current minimum housing and commercial maintenance spaces.
I think everybody's got a list.
In your agenda, Michael has updated this, if you can't see it from there. He's updated this, there was an error, he is updating that in your agenda.
I'm, I'm not going to do every one of these. I'm just going to give you guys a real quick update on where we are. This is, it's small, but this, we added a couple more in that we kind of had on the back burner there too. We've got them in there now, we fixed one of the other ones, so this is up to date. But we've got a little bit over 40 cases that are active right now. And of course, there's always other properties out there that need to be looked at and we do have a list of those, you know, that are in bad shape that we will be bringing into this eventually. This is several different things. This is buildings that need to be worked on. We've got tenants in there that are, that don't have water or don't have heat or there's broken windows, other stuff like that, things that can be fixed. These are, we have some houses that need to be demolished most likely. We have a couple of commercial structures in there that need to be demolished. And then we also have, a lot of these right here is, is Green Acres Trailer Park, a mobile home park.
Where is that, Kevin?
Uh, that is off of Judy Street, off of 2427 West.
Off of the Voice Drive.
If you go up the hill there and then turn around, there's a few houses back there and then the rest of it is all part of the park there.
Okay.
So, so what I have here printed from what came to us...
I've reorganized these a little bit so that they're a little bit more in order for going through this tonight.
Okay.
But that should be, that should be it minus, minus one or two that we, that we had to add on.
Okay, and they've been added on since?
Yeah, we, yeah, we were trying to, we were trying to wrap it up, my apologies. But I'll make this available to you guys as well, so if you need to, if you need to look at it. So, uh, these are those that we mentioned that we've been trying to tear down. Now, there's been a slowdown with COVID and then we also, fire department needed to get some funds and everything. Well, things are, they're rolling on that again. And we, I think we have, at this point, we've received our, done our title searches on all of these. Now, we've got one or two that are ready to go that we already have ordinance for. 1404 Pennington is one. This one right here, that one I believe is, I don't have an exact date on it yet, Michael works at that, it's going very soon.
Which one, Pennington?
Yes, Pennington, right there. You can see it doesn't even have, doesn't even have some of its siding or anything on it anymore. It's already been taken off. 1114 Gibson, and that should be 1138, I apologize. That was one of the corrections we had to make. 1138 Gibson Street, 527 Area Avenue, 622 Lee Street. These are all, all in that, we're working on all those right now. 522 East Main Street, 661 Colston, 441 Colston, and 1602 West Main Street. 1602 West Main Street goes with 1510 West Main Street, which we've already, I'm not sure if we did ordinance on it, but we've already gone through the whole process with that and it's pretty much sitting there ready to go. These are right next to each other, so we wanted to try to burn them both at the same time. And then we did put a couple of commercial ones in this round. We have 2403 Baiden Street. If you remember, this is, there's a house and an office. They're both commercially zoned, they're both used for commercial purposes within recent years. And they're, they're right behind the, kind of see the top of the...
Baiden Road Driving.
Theater there, the driving, yeah, so there's the back of the one theater.
Charles Place. They're both on one piece of property that you've been together?
Yeah, we're going to put these together and take, and hopefully burn them, but if not, we may have to demolish them. We're not sure on that yet. The other one here is 901 Concord Road, which is right near the park.
So, the 2403, at one point, there was discussion because the little building might have been a residence, but then most, most recently was commercial. So we're okay, we've made it through those steps, right? We've determined that...
We were trying to be cautious before, but we didn't, also didn't have a commercial maintenance code then.
Okay, so now...
Yeah. This, I think when you emailed me about it last time, I said we were, once we had that, we'd be able to do it. So we've got that in there.
Let me ask you, Kevin, and this might not be fair, Fire Chief might chime in. There have been times where we have allowed the rural fire departments to do training and do some of these burns. Can we take the lead and let them do some? Can we take the lead and let them do some, and where we might do more than one at a time? I think we have eight or nine on that list that we're waiting on now. Is that something, if you can research with the fire chief?
Yeah, absolutely, I can look into it, yeah, yeah. I usually just go with whatever they tell me, in terms of.
And our department can't get all of them at one time, but I know we used to allow rural fire departments to come in and do some burning with us.
Right.
But is that not, I'm just playing devil's here, is that something that the community college had to play into?
Yeah, all of this is.
That's what I thought, okay. And, okay, because I knew we were on hold for a while because of COVID.
We did have it a few years ago. Jackson Street, somewhere in that vicinity off the Northeast Connector. And I think the Ridgefield Fire Department, volunteer fire department, Bethany participated in that.
I think it's a great idea if we can do it, and I'll talk with the chief about that. These listed here, you'll see they're all very much the same. These are all the units in Green Acres that we're having problems with.
Kevin, what was expected?
We had a picture there for you.
Kevin?
Yes.
What is expected by that following sale, meaning, what does that?
Yeah, I thought I had a slide in there, some pictures for you. But yeah, essentially, we spoke, this park is in the process of being sold. And the owners there are, they're focused, they really want to clean it up and put new units in. It's, you know, we've got long-term concerns, but in the short term, I think, at least in the short term, it's going to be a significant improvement in that area there. So hopefully, these will all be off of here relatively soon. And then we've got a number of other cases, which you can see there's several different properties here, and a lot of different things going on with them. Some of those are minor things, as I mentioned, heat not working, water, drainage issues, issues with their sewer, stuff like that. So they're major issues if you live there or live nearby, but they're not necessarily something we're looking at tearing down house support at this point.
Kevin, real quick, the 514 north, is that residence just north of Ken, East Ken?
Yes, yes, just north of the mill there. And it's an old picture there, you can't see it real well, it actually looks a lot worse than this now.
It does.
That's one that we've been working with Britt, and Britt has started the court process with that and everything. It's a Richard Honeycutt property, and Richard has actually tried to work with us on it. And I think he was going to evict the tenant at the time, but I'm not sure what the date is on that. You can't, basically can't do anything yet at the time being.
With the moratorium, I think that was, went through maybe in September, October, the tenant appealed, and then.
That's right.
The appeal failed under the moratorium period, and so I believe the next court date is in a couple of weeks, mid-March.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of calls about that.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, we're well aware, there's just, you know, the courts have pretty much said you can't move on it right now, so.
Kevin, have you heard any more from the North Street when you've got it right now? Have they come back at all since the?
No, we've been trying to get in touch with them, and that was one of the ones that I've got up here that this is one that we were, we thought was going to be a teardown. We were really, really hopeful when they got in there and started working that they were going to do it right. But they actually, you know, may have made it worse in some areas. There was some of the work that was being done, and it wasn't being done to code with permits or anything. So they were supposed to go back and get an architect and go do that, we haven't heard anything. It's been, oh, it's been probably at least nine months. So we're trying to get in touch with them, and unfortunately, if the condition the house is in, it's sitting wide open, it may be deteriorating further to the point that it will have to be taken out. So again, this is one of those evolving cases here. 4th Street, same with this. This was condemned, I think, by the fire marshal and by the building inspector. I didn't have a picture of it, a recent picture of it with the hole in the foundation down there. And we've spoken with the owner, and he claims that he's going to be fixing this one up, but we're trying to push him along with the two, because we want something done either way.
Where is that actually?
Isn't that right near the?
It's right across from Pfeiffer, yeah.
It's right across from Pfeiffer.
This is the first house up on the right on 4th Street there.
That's bad, that's really, that's really bad.
And it's structurally unsound from where they drove the car into the side too.
And then, but then over here is the attorney's office, is that right, to the left of that?
Yeah, across the street.
Oh, 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 gotcha, 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 okay, gotcha, okay.
No, there's a little blue house right behind it, I think, that's in good shape. This one's across the street from that. And then this, I didn't have a zoomed out picture, but 705th Street. We've got a number of them on 5th Street right now that we've been trying to address, that are in various states of disrepair. This one's actually, probably not at the point of being torn down, but it is vacant. I don't know, does it have a door on it? No door on it, yeah.
Back door was out, front door was out, was that what I had?
Completely missing, completely empty.
Sleeping inside of it, so it's in bad shape.
So again, another one of those, and then again, not just 700, but there's 750, 739. There's several houses down there in South, that's a emerging area.
Same owner or the houses, or different owners?
Different owners, yeah. Ones we're working on, so. The 230 North Street, that would probably be a commercial, commercial maintenance case, but essentially the same process when it comes to how we deal with those. The rest, these are residential. And so I think, you know, right now, we want to, we're going to continue with the demolitions list and try to get, try to get those that we have on that list, the majority of those taken out this fiscal year if we can. If not, whatever we can't do, we'll try to do at the end of next, or at the beginning of next fiscal year. We need to keep handling incoming minimum housing cases regardless of what we do. We have to be available to tenants and the property owners that are primarily tenants that are having problems with their housing conditions, and we need to make sure we're addressing those. But I wanted to ask council, you know, apart from that, what are council's priorities now? I mean, we can do more than we've been doing before, we certainly cannot hit everything all at once. Do we want to focus on downtown commercial? Do we want to address specific neighborhoods? Do you want to do, or streets? Do you want to do sweeps of those areas? Do you want to address common offenders and landlords that we've, you know, we've got some that we know are, have quite a few properties that are troublesome? What is y'all, what do you, what do you want your policy to be about this this year and our priorities for how we address this stuff?
Looks pretty good, like one, two, three.
What?
The way you got them, I mean, yeah, certainly going to downtown. We've got buildings there that still have roofs that are on the floor.
Yeah, and I understand that we can do that, it's just going to be, it's kind of like you saw, it's going to be one or two here, and then a few over here. I don't know if you want us to have more of a focused, a focused area, or just want to keep doing how we're doing it.
I don't think you can abandon everything else in ju.
You can't abandon everything, but we.
Yeah, we got to concentrate some of them, we can't abandon these others. We've got a lot, especially on roads coming in. Talk about Baden Road, 73. There's a lot more than just what we've already identified on those roads.
I know, absolutely.
Unfortunately, we've got a lot of houses we need to move forward on.
Right, and I'm not proposing that we completely go away with this, but I think we can add some more on. I just, you know, do you want to just add them, disperse them, or do you want to add more on in a targeted area, or?
I personally think the staff should make that decision. I don't think we should just tell council to concentrate on, council said you just took this area and nothing else. I think the staff should handle the worst first and move forward.
That's what you're doing, is prioritize the worst ones, or at least.
Target, we definitely, we're always seeing some that we're like, well, that one's worse, you know, but. But that's what we try to do, yeah, yeah.
Well.
Go ahead. You know, like you got it, you got to have the downtown, you're going to have some neighborhoods you're going to have to work on, and you've got the landlords that are the same ones, for the most part, that you've got to deal with. And you, you just have to work getting out all three of those with what's the worst, and get rid of, or look at the ones that are minor, and get, you know, they get something to be, that can be done. But I think, you know, y'all's approach would be deciding what that would be.
Okay.
Ms. Wilder?
I personally want to see, and again, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, okay? I personally want to see some of these off the list, okay, and finalized, okay? I mean, the list, I mean, this morning, somebody at the YMCA said to me, gave me one, well, it's already on there, and I said, it's already on there. And it just happened to be, I said, we'll be talking about it tonight. So that person's probably watching this tonight, and has seen the picture of it.
Yeah, I understand.
But we, and because we didn't have a person of our own, and we were just using James, that was our fallback. We don't have James but one day a week.
Right.
Now that we've got somebody 40 hours a week, and that's what that person is doing. I would love for us to see every month, some of these off the list, and we've gotten rid of them. I think the time is nigh, we've got to show people that we can't say that these are our excuses anymore, that we've got to do it, okay?
Sure, sure. And we have several that Tony's addressed just in the, you know, two and a half months he's been here that didn't even go up there because they came on, and he's addressed them, and they're off. But I know what you're saying, I look at this, and I want these numbers to come down too.
Yeah, I just, I'm ready for it to go, I'm ready for them to go down, or be burned, or something, because we have waited enough, long enough on a lot of them.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
I hope that the rural fire departments will be able to help you with some, maybe the chief can work that out, because if we've got eight or nine waiting out for him now, he can't get to them real quick. We're going to need some help from the other departments if we're going to burn them down.
What would that be, about five to seven per year?
Uh, that's probably a pretty good estimate. I think a couple of years, we had nine, we had nine or so, and then there were a few years, we only had like three or four, so that's probably pretty, pretty good. It does take a while to put them all together, a lot of it is also the cost, I mean, it's, you know, you have to put a lot into assessment, and abatement, and advertisement, and then cleanup afterwards too, so.
And Kevin, has COVID put a lot of this?
Yeah.
I mean, it had to, right?
It's pretty much just put a halt on almost all of it.
So basically, you could almost say a year has been put on hold because of COVID.
Yeah. We've got one that's been on there for a number of years. Pennington's been on there for a long time, and it just wasn't, there were just various different issues with them being able to get to it, it's finally down.
Kevin, I want to add about the priority areas, you know, the higher traffic areas. I think like the mayor was saying, the major thoroughfares that lead into the city. If we've got a house there, or a structure there that needs to be taken down, I personally think that should take priority over some on, you know, Coltsack or Little Street somewhere where there's not a lot of traffic on, if that's all possible, but. I think you have your thing to argue.
Further questions, Kevin?
Do you have a priority list?
Do I have what?
A priority list of houses that need to be taken down, or burned, or whatever you do with them?
Uh, yeah, probably, probably those, probably those right there, those first ones that we were talking about there. I think that's, no, I'm sorry. The first ones that we talked about for demolition, for burning right there, those are kind of our top priority right now.
Lee Street, West Main, is that the ones you're talking about?
Yeah.
James and Road.
Yeah. The first ones that are on the list, pretty much there. Those are the ones we're working on right now, it's top priority for those.
Kevin, I had a constituent reach out about 310 Second Avenue, or you should meet with that structure. 310 Second Avenue. I think it may have been on the list, or may have fallen off, I'm not sure why, but maybe looking at that, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Tony, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you all.
Be safe going back to Rockingham too.
Number nine, departmental hunter reports are in your agenda, anyone have any questions?
I just, I would love moving forward, they're getting, they're great. But I would love for different departments, when they put on their things that they've done, or meetings they've attended, to be specific as to when they were. Because it seems like some of them are the same kinds of things, month after month, but I would love to see that on there. As I read through, I'm reminded that our folks, our staff, our employees do one heck of a job every day. And I would remind them though, that when they are with other folks, to please have their masks on, whatever they might be doing, if they're with other people, they've got to have them. If they're in our city vehicle, and it's just them, I understand that, okay? But if there's more than one in there, and I just, I just would suggest that we continue to do that. And particularly if they are in other businesses, for their particular job, they need to be wearing them. Because nothing says we're not, we're not adhering to the rules more than not having a mask on. And I guess I would say that it looks like that we're still, still got several openings up within the city, and some of them are being filled, and others are still in the process. And I'm doing this because there was something else. I just give attaboy to Ross, you and your group, for all that we've got going on, particularly just working with other departments. One thing that y'all know you have spent a lot of time on is the King Street, back the alleyway. And I know that we had a little update, I don't know, probably two months ago, and I hope that maybe we can have another update on that soon as to where we are with that. Because I know that that's going to play a big part in the downtown revitalization with what's going on there. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Number 10 is a request for an extension of 570 foot of sewer main on Kingsley Drive. This is similar to a couple of requests we've had recently, where there's a house being built, and we would not normally extend that to this property, it's up to the property owner to extend it. And in this case, just like the other couple we've done recently, they are willing to pay the city assessment fee upfront for us to do that. Number 11, ordinance 2106, is a couple of budget amendments. One, to purchase some police vehicles, and two, for some security screens around our towers downstairs. Years ago, when that was built, that was one of the things that people were trying to get away from, but I think it's shown that throughout the country, that that needs to be in place again. So that's, that's one of the things that's recommended. Number 12 is the donation of utility poles to Stanley Community College for the electric line technician program. We've done that before, and there need a couple more poles, I don't know exactly how many. Ms. Suresh, did you have a number?
It's in the body of it.
340 foot.
It's 340 foot and two.
And the last one is the add-on behalf, add approval of third year of the audit contract with Martin and Starnes, an associate for 43775. This is the final year of our agreement with them. So next year, staff will have to be going out to bid and look for bids to bring back to us. This is the third and final year we would approve this contract.
Mayor, if I could just clarify, I don't think we necessarily have to go out to bid the next year. I believe the contract's written that there's a couple optional one-year extensions, but there is a maximum on that, probably per the contract, and I know definitely per our city purchasing policy. But this is the last of the obligated term, yes.
Council, have any questions, comments?
Lou.
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers to approve?
So.
Second by Councilmember Towne.
Just a comment, just a comment. I think it, and I spoke with Ms. Hughes before tonight's meeting in regards to number 12, the donation of the poles to the community college. And the reason I did it is because Councilmember Dry said, shouldn't we do something special with that? So I said something to Martha about it. I think that this goes to show the community, that this is one way that we, as the city of Alamo Memorial, can support that alignment program. And as everybody knows, Ms. Hughes had a son that went through that program and graduated from that program. And this is a program that's very near to she and Doug's heart. So I think it goes to show that we continue over the years, I think the last line of that says, over the years, the city has donated supplies and materials to the program, and we continue to do that. So it shows that we, as a city, appreciate the students going on out there and the program in its entirety. So I just, I wanted that to go on record tonight, just particularly, I read it by Martha, and she said, yep, she would appreciate those comments being made, so.
Further questions, comments?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those who care. This, so starting around table, this is the final meeting, that Colleen Tannenbaum and our finance director will be with us, she will be retired before our next meeting. So Colleen, we thank you for all that you have done for us over the years, and wish you to have a long and healthy retirement.
Thank you.
And enjoy every moment with all those babies, wherever they may be.
Coming around table, Ms. Hughes.
I would just like to congratulate Public Utilities, I noticed in, I think the department reports that they have received.
Not yet.
Probably didn't see that email today.
Okay. I'll come.
That's not official yet, so we can't mention.
Okay.
It won't be official tomorrow.
Okay.
You're on the right track.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Aldrich?
Just a couple of things, again, just thanks to everybody involved in the trash cleanup and our city accounting.
and our city and county. Also, I just wanna remind everyone, we've had an abundance of rain and eerie skies, but every, every single day I see people arriving in dangerous conditions that don't have their headlights on. So just, just remember, if your wipers are on, your headlights need to be on, too, so. Other than that, it's all good.
Mr. Townsend.
Okay.
Mr. Parrish, you have anything?
Um, just only to see if, I think sometimes we do allow somebody like Ms. Conroy's retiring department head to come say a few words if she'd like. I know she'll be back for her city retirement certificate, so she may wanna hold comments until then. I know sometimes she's a little bashful.
Wait a minute. Give her an opportunity, give her a stage, right?
Well, I was just gonna tell you, when I first came here, all those years ago, you know, we work in Excel like constantly. This was our Excel sheets back when I came. We used a pencil and these 13 column pages, and we had no computers, and that's how long I've been here. Mayor was Major Michael at that time.
Not she.
I have seen three public housing directors, three parks and rec directors, three planning directors, three HR directors, four public works directors, five police chiefs, four fire chiefs, five IS people, five public utility directors, two city managers, and four assistant city managers. I've been here a long time. I love. I love all of you. I appreciate the opportunities that you've given me, and this city is great, and you all do a wonderful job, and I just appreciate everybody. And no, I love y'all. I'm gonna shake hands, so I brought something to clean my hands out.
I love that.
Prepare. She's got prepared.
Oh, no.
I don't have gloves, but I do have to clean my hands, I'll be cleaning, so.
You don't have to worry about it.
Oh, Lord.
God bless.
Thank you.
Enjoy. It'll always come back.
Miss, can I still meet that one?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell my job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Michael.
Did the best for last.
Thank you. Well, I was gonna put someone to hug him, but.
Colleen, you're gonna be missed.
Well, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be traveling like I thought I was, so.
Well, maybe that will happen, maybe that will happen. Ms. Hall.
Uh, just a reminder, I don't, all of council, if you get your emails, there is an opportunity for public health as a municipal issue that the league is doing next week. It's a Zoom meeting, like everything else in the world. I have registered that because public health is an issue, okay, that we all, even though it's not our main responsibility, it is our, we do have a responsibility for enforcing public health issues, so I'm going to do that. And with that mentioned, I do know that there are some issues going on within the city, and I don't want it to be the pink elephant in the room, but people are talking about it big time of work of businesses not following the mask. And, you know, Channel Nine's been here. I just wanna know if we're doing anything, and if we're, whatever it is we're doing, I mean, what are we doing, okay? And I would throw that out there, because I believe that folks are.
Keep doing it, you wanna come out and make a report?
Our citizens wanna know what's going on whenever they see us and they, and they hear, you know, our Channel Nine folks say, yeah, they spoke with the chief, and so. Thank you, I didn't see you about that, thank you.
Sure, so actually tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, we, we, as in the District Attorney's Office and the Health Department, Mr. David Jenkins, will be meeting to discuss what our options are and our plan of attack, if you will. Obviously, we wanna educate, we wanna make sure they are aware of what the stipulations are. You know, we're not trying to arrest our way out of this, out of this situation, you know. I understand it's a class-two misdemeanor, you know, to not have your mask, but we don't need to run straight to the arrest, okay? And so that's what we're trying to make sure that we educate and that everybody has a fair chance at this. So hopefully by tomorrow morning, we will know further as to what, what our options are and the best way to handle this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, to that end, there is, this is not about masks, but everybody should have gotten something from the league about a virtual town meeting. And it's, it is like two days after our next meeting, so, and the deadline to register is this week. There is one of those blue boxes, do y'all remember when we used to have those blue boxes? You're talking about?
At the convenience store on.
East Main.
Yeah, saw it yesterday.
Oh, I saw it yesterday, too, and I was just appalled, thinking, I mean, I thought it was trash, and it's not trash, it's clothes and toys, and it's just everywhere. And I knew that litter was on today's agenda, and it just infuriated me on how nasty that looked.
I saw it yesterday, and I, you know, it's hard to remember quite all of our ordinances and whatnot, but I believe something like that is our ordinance, we'll have to verify, so thanks for reminding me, because I have not spoken to Kevin, but I believe the ordinance is, you have to have, if you have one of those boxes, you have to have a physical presence. I don't recall if it's in the city or on that property, but I don't think either one is being met by that box.
We have, I made a note of it for Nada to check out, she's not here today, she won't be in until probably Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday. And I didn't, I drove by and saw it, I didn't go up and actually look at whose it is. I don't know if it's the clothes, maybe somebody lives, you know, a business that's around here, but we have had them off-site before.
I think this is an off-site one.
Yeah, but there's the nuisance issue there where clothes aren't even making it aside there, and they're scattered all about, and it just looks bad.
Right, right. And to that end, I will say that I did make a mention of making sure that our, our city-maintained properties were picked up and cleaned, and I will just say, the ones that I've seen lately, newly acquired properties that we have are looking a lot better, so thank you for that, guys, whoever is responsible for doing that, because we can't preach it if we're not doing it, so thanks very much. I did get an email today from Marilyn with Waste Management. This is our second week of the new recycling schedule. There was some faux pas, and some folks didn't get notified because things didn't stay on their cans, and I was concerned that we wouldn't have the response that we did, but Ross, didn't she say that 80% of the folks last week who pulled them out, I mean, got them out there were supposed to be there? So even though, even though last week was the first weekend, some folks called me and said they didn't know when it was good, so that's a good thing. And I think that's all. I don't know what's squeaking.
I've looked and tried to figure out what that is, squeaking.
I can't stand it, stop.
Mr. Dry.
Ross.
Ms. Loud. Mr. Whitaker.
All I can say is, I'd like to see city council continue working on the litter issue, doing whatever we can, and I'm certainly supportive of us adopting a highway of a street or whatever being part of the program, whether it's a section of the street that we would do regularly or a bigger thought. In the military, we have what's called a radio reaction force. You had a group of people that stand by, and you had something on a perimeter, you sent them over there. So if you wanna do that, Ross can call us, and he's got a big pile of trash, and we can clean it up. It might be, might be more effective for us to just take a street and regular schedule, you know, cleaning up. I'm certainly supportive of doing that.
I'll entertain a motion that we appoint Councilmember Hughes as an acting clerk for the personnel section of the closed session we're preparing to go into.
Salute.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1181, 4, and 6 to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential economic development and personnel. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember, quickly, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.